Mrs. Marcus, I'll let you start. One teacher to another.
Well, first of all, I want to congratulate Ms. Stratford. I think this is unbelievable. For those of you who don't know that, there are 80 schools in the district that could have nominated somebody. There were 60 teachers, 66 teachers that eventually got nominated. She is one of 16 in this whole county to have achieved that award, and that is wonderful, and we're so proud of you. And I have to tell you that your students must be so lucky that they must be lining up at the door for recommendations to get you as a teacher.
Every year.
Everywhere.
I don't know, we don't do those.
I will tell you, if I was a parent at that school right now, my kids would be in your class.
Thank you, that's very sweet.
So, I want to congratulate you and wish you all the best for this year and all of your teaching career. Thank you for being with us.
There are really no words, we are so lucky to have you in this school district. And I'm just, you know, there are so many teachers that do a lot, and then there's opportunities where like, you know, we have exceptional teachers that actually get to be put in the spotlight for the amazing work that we do. And I'm so glad that you're getting, even though you don't want it, it seems like, I'm glad you're getting it for a minute, and we get to acknowledge the great teachers like you that we have in this school district. Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you so much, so, so happy and so proud. And as you know, I think that these children, for the rest of their lives, will remember your name and remember that you had a role in shaping their future, and that is one of the marks of a great teacher. So, thank you.
Congratulations, I'm thinking of sending my 11th grade daughter back to your class, just so I could say one of my kids.
I didn't teach her kids, I know.
With your permission, I would love to come by and see the magic at some point.
Sure.
Well, congratulations, Michelle. You know, they say teachers change lives, and I firmly believe that, and I'm sure that you are impacting so many lives. And that's, you know, in and of itself, I'm sure it's very gratifying, but it's our pleasure to be able to celebrate you and the good work that you're doing and the amazing impact that you're having, and how lucky we are that you've been at the district so long, and that you've been able to grow in your career here. And it's a role model for all of us, so that we can continue down this path, and that you can share all of your wisdom and expertise with all of our other teachers. I'm sure that you already do, but I'm very grateful to have you, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, I'm going to kind of end, since I began with the congratulations, but it's been really fun to see the school community really wrap their arms of support around you. But I was also honored to be able to be in a place where, you know, we're often not recognized, and we're not able to be seen and appreciated, but I was able to be at the same table with both of your parents. And I'm hoping we were able to entertain them the whole time.
Very much so.
And because there's never a dull moment in content. But what wonderful parents that I was able to look across the table and just beaming with pride, you know? And to be able to see that, thank you for allowing me to be part of that. Thank you, Ms. Stratford.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, terrific. May I have an approval of the agenda?
So moved.
All right, the motion was made by Mr. Margot and seconded by Mrs. Marcus. All those in favor?
Aye.
My motion passes 5-0. Dr. Bregy, would you like to report on closed session?
Yes, thank you, President Wells. The board has voted 4 to 0 with one abstention for the approval of OAAH case 2022060149, and the board has voted 5 to 0 to approve settlement case 528509.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is the teacher spotlight, and today we are recognizing our LA County Teacher of the Year recipient, Michelle Stratford, and I'll turn that over to you, Dr. Bregy.
Thank you. What an exciting opportunity that has been to have a Teacher of the Year in our own school district. And it's very honored to be able to be with Ms. Stratford when she was recognized in front of hundreds of people. At this time, I'd like to invite Principal Mr. Bugby up to start the honors.
Thank you, Dr. Bregy, School Board, and Beverly Hills community. I believe there is a bet in Horace Mann of how long it takes me to cry. So, teachers, are you ready? So often at school board meetings, we hear voices raised in discontentment and disagreement. Tonight, we will raise our voices in celebration of life, laughter, and love of learning. Ms. Stratford, 5th grade teacher at Horace Mann, one who would much prefer to never be the center of attention, has become just that. Ms. Stratford celebrates learning, celebrates individuality, and celebrates students. There it is. Time!
I actually saw it.
Thank you, thank you for that. One may ask what educational excellence looks like. I'm here to share with you the joy of walking into Ms. Stratford's classroom, to see educational excellence, to hear educational excellence, and to feel educational excellence. Ms. Stratford, your skills, talents, and gifts have been acknowledged. Oh, I can't even look at you. You were named one of the top 16 teachers in the county of Los Angeles. We're all here to celebrate you the same way that you celebrate students. Stop texting everyone! Congratulations to a well-deserved recognition. Congratulations on being named Beverly Hills Teacher of the Year for the 2021 to 2022 school year. Okay, you guys are on.
Also, still do your photo, and then we'll go, I know we all want to say something. It's such a special honor.
I was wondering about that being a...
Pile in, so cute.
Okey dokey. Everyone, great job, thank you.
Mrs. Marcus, I'll let you start. One teacher to another.
Well, first of all, I want to congratulate Ms. Stratford. I think this is unbelievable. For those of you who don't know that, there are 80 schools in the district that could have nominated somebody. There were 60 teachers, 66 teachers that eventually got nominated. She is one of 16 in this whole county to have achieved that award, and that is wonderful, and we're so proud of you. And I have to tell you that your students must be so lucky that they must be lining up at the door for recommendations to get you as a teacher.
Every year.
Everywhere.
I don't know, we don't do those.
I will tell you, if I was a parent at that school right now, my kids would be in your class.
Thank you, that's very sweet.
So, I want to congratulate you and wish you all the best for this year and all of your teaching career. Thank you for being with us.
Of course.
There are really no words, we are so lucky to have you in this school district. And I'm just, you know, there are so many teachers that do a lot, and then there's opportunities where like, you know, we have exceptional teachers that actually get to be put in the spotlight for the amazing work that we do. And I'm so glad that you're getting, even though you don't want it, it seems like, I'm glad you're getting it for a minute, and we get to acknowledge the great teachers like you that we have in this school district. Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you so much, so, so happy and so proud. And as you know, I think that these children, for the rest of their lives, will remember your name and remember that you had a role in shaping their future, and that is one of the marks of a great teacher. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, I'm thinking of sending my 11th grade daughter back to your class, just so I could say one of my kids.
I didn't teach her kids, I know.
With your permission, I would love to come by and see the magic at some point.
Sure.
Thank you.
Anytime, my door's open.
Well, congratulations, Michelle. You know, they say teachers change lives, and I firmly believe that, and I'm sure that you are impacting so many lives. And that's, you know, in and of itself, I'm sure it's very gratifying, but it's our pleasure to be able to celebrate you and the good work that you're doing and the amazing impact that you're having, and how lucky we are that you've been at the district so long, and that you've been able to grow in your career here. And it's a role model for all of us, so that we can continue down this path, and that you can share all of your wisdom and expertise with all of our other teachers. I'm sure that you already do, but I'm very grateful to have you, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, I'm going to kind of end, since I began with the congratulations, but it's been really fun to see the school community really wrap their arms of support around you. But I was also honored to be able to be in a place where, you know, we're often not recognized, and we're not able to be seen and appreciated, but I was able to be at the same table with both of your parents. And I'm hoping we were able to entertain them the whole time.
Very much so.
And because there's never a dull moment in content. But what wonderful parents that I was able to look across the table and just beaming with pride, you know? And to be able to see that, thank you for allowing me to be part of that. Thank you, Ms. Stratford.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, our next item on the agenda is commendations and recognition.
And the first item is the announcement of our BHF 2022-23 Innovative Teacher Grant awardees from BHF president Farah Dotus.
Those are all my mom friends from Horace Mann, so I just had to say hello. Thank you, Board, for allowing BHF, well, me, to come and announce the Innovative Teacher Grant winners for 2022-2023 school year. I believe Rebecca, do you have the presentation available? Okay, all right. So, just to remind everyone, the Innovative Teacher Grant awards are awarded each year, and we provide funding and support to teachers and certificated staff who seek to address a need in our district in outside-of-the-box ways. And the kind of guidelines we go by are that it should be replicable, available to use in different disciplines that is fairly widely used in special education classrooms and applying it to a general education setting. So this was, this was a unique way of using curriculum. The second grant awardee is also from Hawthorne. His name is Joel Wheeler. He's the Learning Lab math teacher and his grant title is "Learning Math Through Guided Play: Let's Excite, Engage, and Get Students Thinking Critically About Math in a Fun, Low-Stress Environment." So as with anyone, we tend to build connections and learn better when we're having fun. And so he's going to use that from the K through five level during, during his Learning Lab classes. Next winner was Lisa Beeler. She actually won last year and she's a repeat winner. She is the Horace Mann Technology TOSA I-IV Coach. Her grant title is "Making with Piper Make: Exploring Physical Computing and How It Relates to Future Careers in Biomed, Gaming, Sports Analysis, Clean Energy, and Robotics." So that is a really excellent example of teaching the kind of our career and technical education pathways, but bringing it down to the TKV level. Our next awardee is at BVMS. It's Kristin Hartley. She's the counselor or a counselor there, excuse me. Her grant title is "Bulldog Aid and Dude Be Nice: Increasing Mental Health Support and Awareness and Spreading Kindness Community-Wide." I know that she did Dude Be Nice for a week last year at BVMS. It was a huge success and so I think she's, she is through this grant going to expound upon that and make it year, year long. And lastly, our high school winner this year is Michael Fetterman. He's the visual, visual arts teacher and department chair. His grant title is "Synthik Drawing Tablets: Bolstering Dual Enrollment and CTE Pathways Via Animation and Visual Arts." And his grant actually addresses one of our CTA pathways strongly. It's in animation, they use a program called Toon Boom Harmony, which is actually used by Disney and other animation studios. And he wants to add to that with these drawing tablets. And he would also be able to bring that out to the general visual arts, anyone who's kind of trying out the field. He, he does the freshman year course and can introduce that to, to new and exciting and excitable children. So that is our Innovative Teacher Grant awardees for this year. They were unable to join us this evening, but I'm hopeful that like last year, they can come in and do a presentation and possibly do dedicated presentations, each one, so that they get more coverage for these really exciting and interesting ideas and implementations that they have. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Farah. Mrs. Marcus?
Well, I want to thank you for all the hard work that you did for this and putting this together, the BHF, and Farah for this work. I remember last year being in this chair, or I think I was in this chair, and I got to visually see all the products and their, and I was blown away by some of the classes that when they brought their products and when they brought their studies in or whatever they made, I loved it. And I love being able to see the results of this. So I, I, I'm looking forward to it. I also want to make a little bit of a comment about the last one, Mr. Fetterman, about the animation class because that's one of our pathways. And I have to tell you that my grandson is in the animation class at sixth grade and he loves it. And I expect that he may be up there with Mr. Fetterman if he's still around at that time. So I'm looking forward to that. So I'm looking forward to the presentations and I thank you again for all the hard work. I want to thank the BHF and I will turn it over.
Thank you. I also want to thank the BHF and all of our wonderful, creative, proactive teachers for coming up with these, for coming up with these programs. The work that BHF does is so vital to the success of our school district. It opens up so much opportunity when we're, you know, able to raise money and do programs through BHF. So very grateful for the work that they do and thank you again to our wonderful teachers and being able to highlight them.
One more question. Approximately how many teachers applied? I know we only gave five, but I was thinking how many did apply and to choose from?
This year it was 12, I believe.
Wow.
Yeah. It's all about people. We're getting bigger, people are more and it's getting harder to decide who works for the grants. It's pretty, you know, exciting.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, BHF. Thank you, teachers and students. I just wanted to show, I just wanted to reiterate some of these areas where these grants were given because it really shows such a wide spectrum of talent and things that are going on at the school. So we had, there was animation, there was Bulldog Aid, right, which is mental health. There was something about stamina and emotional health, math, and physical computing and robotics. So that's just a wide range and we're very lucky as a district to have such variety and it's not just the usual things from like 30 years ago. And it really puts us on the map. So thank you.
Thank you for bringing these and it just stresses how important the foundation is in augmenting a great education in a district like ours. We, we have to really support our community's efforts to fund the foundation and to continue to do so. Thank you.
I agree. I'd just like to thank BHF for providing this program. And I really want to thank the teachers because without having teachers that are interested and willing to do this and put the time in, we wouldn't have these programs. So I want to thank the teachers for their dedication and passion for wanting to, to do these programs.
Yeah, one thing that I just want to call out real quick, we just heard that Farah wasn't behind the microphone, but we heard that there were 12 teachers that applied. I mean, I would love to be in a situation where we can be providing the funds for all of these, you know, programs and not having to choose. So for anyone that's listening out there, you know, the BHF needs the support. So thanks.
That's great. Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is our BHUSD Community Spotlight. Oh, you're so right. Thank you. Our next item is recognizing our outgoing CBOC members. And tonight we have Rich Baron, who will be here to represent for the CBOC members. And tonight we're recognizing Rich Baron, Lee Eggerman, and Yov Tamir. Sure.
I'm going to keep this, is that on? Going to keep it brief. I like to talk. But I want to say it's been a pleasure and a privilege servicing, serving on the Citizens' Bond Oversight Committee for the last six and a half years. I have tremendous confidence that Les and Nathan will continue move the CBOC forward positive and in a transparent direction. I believe the important decisions we make today will have the best possible effects on our community for decades and many, many decades to go. During my time on the CBOC, we've, it's been pretty amazing. We've seen Horace Mann completion, you know, which is pretty amazing walking it. The high schools, B1, B2, and a lot of work on El Rodeo and the remaining high school. The CBOC, for those who don't understand, is, our purpose is to make sure that the dollars are spent appropriately. And we are, you know, it is mandated on the bond to have a CBOC. You know, today we have a school board that has put our stakeholders first. I want to thank our current school board for supporting our community and all stakeholders by hiring qualified bond manager, taking security in-house, creating a structure of accountability and giving our own superintendent and his team the super, the authority to supervise the entire construction process. And for hiring a brand-new construction manager and a full team. These needed chains, changes along with strong supervision and accountability and transparency will take this program into a new direction and of completion in the future of our district. And I'm very proud to have served for the last six and a half years. Thank you.
Hold on one second.
Come back up.
We're not done. In recognition of your service, I'd like to personally thank you, Rich. When I first got on the CBOC, Rich and Lee and I joined the CBOC at the same time. And it's been a pleasure to be on the CBOC and to get to know you throughout these years. And I really appreciate your dedication and service to the CBOC and how much you care about our school districts and seeing our construction to, wanting to see our construction to be completed. And I'd like to just pass it around to the other board members. I'd also would like to acknowledge Lee Eggerman and Yov as well for their time and dedication to our CBOC and to our school district. Michelle?
Hi, Lee, I mean, Rich. I'd just like to tell you that I was on the CBOC with you for, for those years. I have never seen such a passionate and dedicated person as well as Mr. Eggerman and Mr. Tamir. But I really, I, I really learned a lot from you guys, working with you. And that was to help me and to know that the money you were going to watch to make sure that it was spent according to the bond issue. And I, I just want to say that you've left some big shoes to fill and I hope that the committee that's coming up, and I know they will be able to carry on like you said. And I hope that you just don't disappear because I still value your wisdom, your knowledge, and everything that you can offer so I can still call you if I have a question. And thank you again for everything.
Rich, we're, we're indebted to you. Six and a half years, that's a long time to be part of this program. You've seen ups and downs and different ways of kind of doing things. And, you know, I, I know that the committee has sometimes probably been frustrating because you're looking at things in arrears and you're not, you know, you, you don't have some of the authority maybe sometimes, but, you know, the feedback that you've given and the committee that, you know, has given has really been crucial for this board in making some of the decisions we made. And I'm glad that we were aligned in our, you know, views in terms of what was necessary in terms of restructuring this program. And it was because of, you know, we were able to do that with a lot of the feedback we got with folks like you. So I mean, really, thank you. You guys played a very important role in, I think, hopefully getting this program, you know, on the right track. So thank you.
Just echoing the sentiments of my colleagues, thank you for your loyalty to the district and the bond program. And that goes for you, Lee, and Yov.
Thank you, Rich and Lee and Yov. It is the only committee that we currently have to have. So it's really generous of people to dedicate their time. It's not the most glamorous committee and the work is, is pretty laborious, but we do appreciate that people step up, including all your years of service. So thanks.
And thank you again. I, I would say that, you know, I've watched the progression with the CBOC and it's only continued to improve. And, and I would say that the audit report that we had this last year was probably the best audit report that we've had so far. And I really appreciate you really sticking with it and your dedication and I don't imagine you're going to be stepping too far away.
Also want to offer my thank you to you, Mr. Baron. I, out of all the committees we have, this is the one committee that I could say, not in just our district, but in every district that I've been in, do people understand what their role is? And I think that you were the model of what the role is in this position. And the new people that have come along, I think that you've done a great job of mentoring them so that they really have an understanding of what the role is in the CBOC. I really appreciate all the times that you were so comfortable enough to just call and ask a question or share information from a perspective of trying to find out more information, wanting to get some more information in the most appropriate ways. It was always like having a conversation with you. And I know I always walked away from those conversations knowing a lot more than I did than before our call. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next item is the Community Spotlight. And this month, we are, for this meeting, we're, this month is National Substance Abuse Prevention Month. And as part of our Community Spotlight, we've invited Julie Shamas here to speak with us this evening. I think we're all very much aware of the fentanyl crisis that is happening. And Julie is here to share her very personal story. After tragically losing her 19-year-old son Tyler to fentanyl in October of 2018, Julie became an advocate in an effort to prevent overdose and drug poisoning. She teamed up with another mom to form Moms Against Drugs to support grieving families and hold events to raise awareness. Julie's now formed the Drug Awareness Foundation with her family. She gives fentanyl awareness presentations to schools, including our own, parent and professional groups, as well as getting middle, high school, and universities to add lessons about fentanyl-poisoned drugs to their curriculums and orientations. She works on distributing fentanyl testing strips and Narcon in her community. Julie is the driving force behind the legislation SB 864 Tyler's Law, which requires every hospital in California to test for fentanyl whenever they order a standard five-panel urine test. On August 22nd, 2022, Governor Gavin Newsom signed SB 864 Tyler's Law and it will go into effect January 1st of 2023. So I would like to welcome Julie Shamas.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. So I used to be a third grade teacher and then I was a stay-at-home mom. And I was thrust into the position of becoming advocate when my 19-year-old son Tyler was found dead in the bathroom of a sober living right around the corner from my house. And I never thought that Tyler would die of an overdose. He was so smart. He knew everything about drugs, but fentanyl has changed everything, the drug landscape. As you know, longtime users are dying, first-time users, recreational users. And so what my family's decided to do is focus our attention on trying to warn kids before they ever buy a pill, take a pill. We do anything and everything to warn people. I talk to schools, I talk to parents, I get private donations to get billboards put up. I just recently talked to the Santa Monica Blue Buses and we're going to have like warning signs on the back of buses. I have signs on my lawn. Lilly Boss just helped me get City Hall in Beverly Hills lit up, Purple for Overdose Awareness Day. And then Councilmember Paul Corretts for Los Angeles got LAX pylons lit up and LA City Hall. So really anything that we can think of, we do to kind of let people know. My, my son goes to UT Austin and he speaks to fraternities and sororities and warns them about fentanyl-poisoned drugs. And I say poisoned drugs, not laced drugs, because the drug cartels and drug dealers are not taking actual Xanax, OxyContin, or Percocet and smashing it up and adding fentanyl. They are just pressing pills with a pill press you can get off of Amazon and they're putting fentanyl and filler in. So, you know, our mission is to try to talk to kids before they get to this stage where they even think of using drugs and also to give them alternatives to when they're feeling anxious or depressed because we found that's the kind of number one reason that kids are purchasing drugs. And it was, it got out of control during COVID when they were stuck in their rooms and they would go on Snapchat and the drug dealers deliver. And it's just like ordering a pizza and parents have no idea. You can say, "Not my child," but if you cannot say with 100% certainty that your child will never try one drug one time, you cannot be sure that they're safe from fentanyl. So our other big push is to get everybody to have Narcan in their house. Even if you don't have a child of the age that you think might be using drugs, your neighbors can come running out of their house one day. Or if you have an elderly parent or grandparent, they can take too much of their cough medicine or, you know, opioid pain medicine. So it's so important to have. And I will be talking to ninth graders in Beverly Hills at the end of October to warning them about it. And, and I'm talking to some other groups, a private group in Hidden Hills and basically anyone that asks. We don't charge and we will go anywhere and talk to anyone that will listen. Thank you.
Thank you very much for sharing. I appreciate that you're going to be going to the schools and to speak to the ninth graders. I, I'd like to just go around and say, Rochelle, did you have something to say?
Well, first of all, I want to thank you for coming this evening. And I know that I have, since the day I read the article in the paper about the incident at Bernstein High School, I have been advocating like crazy for more education in our school, for our kids, because there can never be enough.
Correct.
And, and on top of which, this is a drug which can be so easily hidden in something else that I begin to worry about a lot of things that our kids do and they don't even realize it, even if they're not experimenting with drugs, et cetera. I am very concerned about that. I would like to share with you, when I taught eighth grade science at El Rodeo, one of the first things I did every year was that at the end of, near the end of the year, I would bring in someone from Alcoholics Anonymous or from Narcotics Anonymous. I used to find speakers and bring them into each one of my eighth grade classes. And we'd sit in a circle and they would tell their story and the kids could ask them questions. And you'd like to think, think that that will have an impact on them. But somehow, that isn't even enough. We just can't get enough into their heads that you'd never know when it's going to happen or who's going to do it or when you accidentally might do it and you're at a party or something like that. So, I just want to thank you for sharing your story. I, I hope, I'm thrilled to hear about Tyler's eight six four.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing that. And as I say, kids think that they, they think that they're superhuman, that nothing's going to happen to them. And that's not true. And we need to impress upon them with the education and with the constant reminder, be careful what you take and who you take it from, because you never know.
Yeah, and they need to hear it from different sources, from their parents, from me, from, you know, people that are ex-addicts, from anyone, doctors. The pediatricians need to be talking about it with their student, with their patients.
Thank you for sharing your story. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
I don't think I could say it better than my colleague. But thank you so much for so selflessly giving. You, you've probably saved countless lives with the work that you've done. So, thank you and the work that you're continuing to do with eight six four and for our school district and everything. I just have a question.
Yes.
Why are we seeing this? Like, like, I, I, I don't understand why there's fentanyl laced in so many different things. Like, what, where did this come from?
You want the whole story? I'll give you the really short version.
Yeah, just.
If you want to, like, watch the, the series Dope Sick and it'll explain. But it all started with the Sacklers and pushing OxyContin. People got addicted to OxyContin and then the government cracked down and people couldn't get their OxyContin, so they turned to the streets to get heroin. And then the Chinese and the cartels saw that Americans are using a lot of heroin. And if we cut fentanyl into it, it's cheaper and it gets people addicted. And everyone always asks me, "Well, why are the cartels putting fentanyl in drugs if it's going to kill people? It's not a good business model." They don't care, they don't care. It's two out of every five pills on the streets has enough fentanyl to kill you. But the other three have enough to get you addicted after taking it two times. You will start craving it, that's how addicting it is. So, that's why they are adding it, not just to opioids, but to coke. I mean, there's a big, my kids tell me, a lot of college students are using coke these days and people didn't realize that it could be in coke, because coke is not an opioid. But they're putting it in anything, Adderall, Xanax, OxyContin, Percocet. And, and you know, some kids, my daughter's in law school and she says to me one day, "Mom, I didn't sleep last night, I was studying all night." And what goes into my head, but I wonder how many kids right now are buying what they think is an Adderall off of social media, like, to help them stay up all night. And, and kids are trusting. So, the dealer will say, you know, "There's no fentanyl in this and I tested it." But you can't test a pill unless you crush it and add it with water. And then if you were going to use it, you would drink the water. But drug dealers are not testing pills and then putting them back together.
Yeah, how terrifying. Thank you for all the work you've done.
Thank you for your strength and you have done your son proud. And I am, I am so pleased to hear that there's legislation, Tyler's Law. A question I have is, is it implicated in liquids or is it primarily like a solid, like a crushed?
It, it's a powder. So, they're putting it, you know, they'll, they'll make pills out of it. And I'm trying to think what drug is liquid. I mean, conceivably, you could add it to some, if you want to kill someone, you could add it to their drink in a bar. But there's no money in that for the cartels, so they're not really doing that. And I have heard of, not in marijuana from a dispensary, but in states where marijuana is not legal and people get like the liquid pens. If they're getting like kind of counterfeit pens, they could be in that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie, for presenting. Good to see you. It's just a reminder, it was touched upon by a lot of people, but the conversations that need to happen between students and their parents. We, we, we're here in a school district setting and we're talking to board members about this and the few people in the community who will watch this. But it is more important than ever that parents have open lines of communication with their students at all time. Don't assume that they're in high school, they might know better now. Those are the times when kids don't know better and they test the waters. So, it really needs to be pushed upon our entire community and the larger community throughout the country. But that conversations and honesty between parents and students are what can help quell this. So, thank you.
I think we have to remind them too, because kids will see someone selling Xanax online and think, "Oh, my mom takes Xanax, it's not a big deal." But according to the DEA, 100% of all the pills sold on social media or on the streets are fake.
I, I think it's just so important, it's not just, I, I agree with Noah that the parents need to have the conversations with the kids, but we also need to inform the parents so that they can have informed conversations. And to your point, kids need to hear it from different people at different stages in their life. Sometimes it's better from a peer or an adult that they have a relationship with rather than their parent. So, I don't think that they can hear it from enough sources. I think Ally Norman's going to speak in a few minutes to talk about the program that we have at, at the school and also at the middle school. There's going to be a, an parent education program for fentanyl that's on October the 12th, that is open to all BHUSD parents, where they can really become informed about fentanyl specifically. And I encourage anyone that's listening to please, to spread the word about that. And it will be at BVMS. But I just want to thank you, Julie, because I, I, my heart goes out to you to lose your son in such a tragic way. And I, I, I really appreciate that you've been able to, to carry on and to take up the charge to inform other people about this and to get this legislation. I think that it speaks volumes and it's heartbreaking that, that you lost your son to this. And, and it was in 2018. So, this, this is something that has been going on for a while and is only getting, you know, more widespread. And I just don't think we can take this, that we, we can't be more serious about this and the implications and dangers of fentanyl. And I really appreciate all that you're doing and your family, and you are saving lives.
Thank you.
You really are.
May I?
Thank you.
May I ask one question too, if I may? You know, since we have you as an expert here, Halloween is around the corner. Do you have particular concerns about, and I know this is a huge question, but what are your thoughts on?
It's funny you should ask that, because my son's dealer was prosecuted by the DEA and I'm still in touch with the DEA agent. So, I texted him the other day because there's all this stuff on social media about, "Don't let your kids go trick-or-treating." They found fentanyl that looked like candy in nerds' boxes. But it's really not to the cartel's benefit to target little kids. Little kids aren't going to, don't have money for drugs. I personally think, and other people I've talked to, that they were trying to smuggle them into the country and that's why they put them. I'm not going to tell you 100%, you know, that you always can have a crazy person that puts drugs in candy, who knows? But I, that to me is not a big concern. The bigger concern would be, and this has happened numerous times, if the parents are drug users and they leave it laying around and it looks like, I mean, I heard of an 18-month-old that died recently from fentanyl because her parents left drugs around and it looks like candy and it's a baby, yeah.
I think you also brought up another point that I think is important for people to know about, and that is that there are testing strips that are available. So, you know, you have kids in college or you have kids in high school and I, I just think they need to be armed with all information and they can get those, I think, on Amazon.
You can, if you go on my website, which is DrugAwarenessFoundation.com, I have a page of resources and there's an organization that I work with. And if you go on there, it's, it's called EndToOverdose.net. You can take a little training and they will send you out free Narcan and you can buy testing strips from them. And they ask for a donation to cover their shipping, which is like $10. So, you can get trained on how to use Narcan and get testing strips.
And, and that's a good thing for kids to know too.
And they, you can also get free testing strips from harm reduction places. I have them at home. And my son, when he talks to fraternities, he says, "I'm not going to tell you not to do, do drugs. You know you're not supposed to be using drugs, but I'm going to tell you how to make it a little bit safer. Don't use alone, test your drugs, have Narcan on hand."
I just want to add my thanks as well. You know, it, it's not often when people let us know about a problem that's happening, but also not come with a solution. And you're part of the solution for us and I think you'd be really proud of what we've done. Just recently, I mean, fentanyl's been around for a long time, but this crisis is real. And, you know, we've come a long way with your help and your support. And we're continuing and we will make this a priority for us.
And you guys are being really proactive. Lorraine is my cousin and so she sent me out what was sent out about it and I was very impressed.
Now, we just need to make sure it gets to everybody. So, thank you very much. And thank you for being at our schools.
Thank you so much.
I think it will make a big difference.
Thank you.
Yes, Les. After Les comes up, we're going to hear from Ally Norman, who's going to just speak briefly about our program and what's happening at the school, so around fentanyl. And it's not just fentanyl. I think what Julie brings up as well is, you know, it's substance misuse or prevention. And there's other, you know, tools that Ally's program seeks to provide the kids with in terms of their emotional wellness and, and ways to deal with anxiety. And all of these things all can get combined and, and play into each other. So, I, I'm looking forward to hearing Ally's presentation. I think it's, we, we, she can't, she can't communicate that program enough because it's very comprehensive and I think it's very important. Come up here. This is Les Bronte.
I'm privileged to run the CPR program for the city of Beverly Hills. And it's mandatory that we talk about Narcan. We have the delivery system. We, we've just had someone help us being able to identify when someone's under the influence, things we look for. And I'll share with you, it's all about small pupils and breaths in less than six per minute. That tells you instantly. And what we're going to do, and I'd like to invite you to come to one of our meetings and I'd like to do a video with you that I promise you will be seen by every one of our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Les. So, next we're going to hear from Ally Norman and our, about our Norman Aid program. Welcome, Ally, and thank you for being here.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
I apologize if my connection hasn't been so great. Okay, all right. Well, thank you for inviting me to present, to present about Norman Aid Substance Misuse Prevention Campaign. Every month, we focus on different campaigns. And October is our, is our goal is to educate about drug and alcohol misuse. Twice a month, we have the opportunity to connect with entire student body through Norman Connection. This month, we'll be, we'll be showing eye-opening videos to educate students on October's campaign and to promote peer-led activities and resources. Last week, we showed a short clip called Dead Upon Arrival that was extremely powerful and educated hundreds of students on the dangers of fentanyl. Through our Instagram page, we provide daily posts to over 800 of our community followers. This month, we'll be sharing posts, stories about substance misuse and managing peer pressure. As we know, that's a problem for our students. If you're not currently following us, you can find us at BHHS Norman Aid. For parents, we are offering a reality party on October 23rd to experience the current realities of teen parties and learn how to help change these dangerous social norms. In collaboration with our community partners, the tours will portray a teen party staged by Beverly Hills High School student actors. After the 30-minute tour, parents will participate in a 30-minute debrief discussion with an expert panel on how to keep kids safe. We hope that you register and join us, it's filling up quick, so do so now. In honor of Red Ribbons Week Say No to Drugs National Campaign, during the last two weeks of October, we'll kick off our program with Norman Aid Peer Counselors Mental Help Tuesday. Our lunch discussion will be on October 25th, where our peer counselors will lead a candid discussion about saying no to peer pressure and will give out candy, red goodies to all those who participate. On October 26th, our Make Today Well-Lived podcast will air season three, episode two. And it will feature one of our own Maple counselors, Stephanie Rosenberg, who worked at a treatment center. And she'll discuss the meaning of natural high, meaning dancing, music, finding things that, you know, you're excited about. She'll share tools for celebrating safely and responsibly and practice healthy coping skills and managing stress. On October 27th, during PE classes, we will hear the stories from Julie. Thank you so much for being here. And her friend Lori will talk to all of our freshmen in PE about fentanyl poisoning. And, and some sophomores will be there as well. With all the shocking news headlines and parent community worries, I really appreciate the time that you've given to me to present on this timely educational campaign. These campaigns are only one of the critical parts of our Norman Aid services. At the very core of our program are the people that provide the services and care for our wellness center. We are a team of 28 passionate people. 13 of those are awesome peer counselors and then we have 15 interns. All of these are, I personally train and supervise. I alone manage the day-to-day responsibilities to run our center, which provides over 2,000 individual counseling sessions a year and is increasing. While I'm doing that, I'm teaching peer counseling classes, developing and teaching monthly themed curriculum for all students, producing and promoting our programs through podcasts, Norman Connection and Instagram, and of course, the sensitive demands of crisis management. I am the sole employee to manage it all. I have pioneered the center and proactively added programs that we are all so proud of today. I've added them to my original job description because I truly see the value of wellness education and services for our entire student community and families. With the increase in mental health challenges that we've all seen at our school, within our communities, within the nation, the volume of students needing services post-pandemic and the everyday high demands of running a full-service center, the educational programs like the ones I presented to you today will no longer be sustainable without more support. Unless Norman Aid is given more resources, specifically an administrative assistant that can support me in running the center and developing programs, like I've mentioned, we will have to sacrifice the majority of the programs that have been so impactful for our social, emotional health of our students. I truly thank the board and I'm very thankful for all the recognition and praise given to Norman Aid. And I remain hopeful that with my professional transparency today, the board will agree to provide the necessary administrative support in 2022, 2023 school year so that we can continue offering the mental health services that our students need and deserve. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ally, I really appreciate that. I, I also would like to add a thank you to Michael LeBeau for all of his support for our program as well, because I don't think we would be able to have this program to the extent that we have without his, his continued support behind our programs with Norman Aid. So, I, I wanted to acknowledge him as well. And thank you for alerting the board to your needs for your program. Rochelle?
Thank you for taking the time to listen.
I appreciate it.
Well, I was going to mention Michael LeBeau also, but it seems that that's not enough. And I guess we need to do a little bit more for the resources of the Ally Norman. I'd also like to point out that there is another group that's not yet completely up and running, but Bulldog Aid at Beverly Vista Middle School. Hope it's to mirror this program and do the same thing for our sixth, seventh and eighth graders. I would just like to compliment Ally on, Ms. Norman, on such a complete and dedicated and passionate organization that she does. organization that she does, and the programs that she runs, and the way she runs it with every month, something new. And the fact that she's really, they want to say, if you want to get a job done, go find a busy person, because she'll get it done. And she gets it done. I got to tell you that she's amazing. And I think I will be coming to the October 23rd program that she's got, if I can be invited. It's up to you, Ally. I'd like to see that program if I can.
We're all invited.
Thank you. I will be there. I got to write that down right now. And again, I hope we can draw, get the resources to keep that program going. It's well worth it. Thank you.
Thank you so much for all the work that you're doing, Ally. Truly very important for our students, and appreciate you calling out the need. That's very well received. And we need to do what we can to continue to support this program. It's crucial. Thanks.
Thank you, Ally. I work in the schools, as you know, and in the capacity as a psychologist. And I can say that the model of schools is really rapidly changing, in part because of the pandemic and what has happened. I think that Ally knows very well that while, you know, 50 years ago, we had, we loosely had a few counselors that would help children get through some very everyday crises. But right now, we have a series of a lot of different, very complex problems that are facing our communities at large in our country. And therefore, I think that your need and what you're telling us, you know, the demand for your services really has increased a great deal. And you very humbly are telling us about that, but I know it is true. And I also know, as working in this field, that there is a great deal of administrative work to be done. There's paperwork. And that same mindset that has to do tedious paperwork is unfortunately kind of the antithesis to the person who gives great counsel and therapy, but both have to exist. And so, I personally feel that help in the way of administrative help is absolutely warranted. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I will just say ditto to my colleagues' comments, and much appreciated, Ally. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Ally. I think that we've all recognized that mental health and wellness is a priority for our school district. And I appreciate all that you've done so far. And I think that, you know, I think I'm probably one of your biggest fans in terms of communicating your programs, because I really believe in them. I think they're very, I love that you have the peer counseling and that you're training the students, because they can be the best advocates and the best support for each other. And that's really building the capacity for our school district, and I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
And thank you very much for your time and coming here tonight. And we look forward to all the programs this month.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
Thank you. Well, that completes the community spotlight, but I did want to just highlight one thing, and that is that next board meeting, I'm inviting some parents to speak about Iran. And we have such a large community in our school community. And I think that it's really important for us to acknowledge what is happening in Iran. It's affecting so many, it affects all of us, but it's affecting directly many members of our community and their families. And I just want to say that I personally stand with the women in Iran who are fighting for human rights and how important that is. And I don't think that we can spread awareness enough and provide our support. So, I look forward to hearing from some of our parents at our next board meeting. I think it's very challenging and difficult for them to speak about, and I would really appreciate everybody's support when we have them come and speak. Okay, on that note, I'm going to move on to our next item. Thank you very much, Julie. I'm pulling M. May I have a motion for consent?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar minus item M.
All second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. I pulled item M, and that is the warrant report. And it's really just to make a clarification for the community. When I review the warrant report, there were a few items that are on there. They don't have a vendor listed. Under the vendor category, it's blank. And so, I contacted Raphael and asked him if he could just clarify those. And I think it's important for the community to hear. There were three items on the warrant report that did not have vendors listed. So, I'll let Raphael speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, President Wells, members of our board, community members, Cabinet, Dr. Bregge. So, in regards to your question, yes, it's been district practice in the past that at some points in the warrant report, we might not list a name. Usually, that's indicative that there was a settlement for, you know, some sort of legal settlement that was agreed upon, and that's why that's not listed in the future, so that it's more, you know, obvious. What we're going to do is, we're going to put on there the case number so that it's, you know, easily accessible, so everyone knows what that is. Because I do understand why, you know, if it's just blank, it might give a perception, well, who is this for and why? Yes, and it's not a blank check. It's not. But it's just simply a case settlement. And again, I did pull the backup for those in case the board would like to see those three have that tonight. But that's what that's for. And again, in the future, that was district practice in the past. But going forward, I talked to our team, and we're going to go ahead and put those numbers there. So, it's simple to see.
Thank you very much. I think that'll be great for everybody, and it's much more transparent. So, thank you.
So, I'll make a motion to approve item M, the warrant report number four.
Motion was made by Mr. Margot and seconded by Mrs. Marcus. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. The next item on the agenda is our superintendent report.
Great. Thank you for this opportunity. So, I want to just start off by giving a thank you, heartfelt thank you to our principals. October is National Principals Month. The job of principal, it's been 13 years since I've been a principal, and the amount of changes that has happened to that position, the varied tasks of leadership that have been added, layered after layered into the principal position, has been nothing short of extraordinary. And I just want to give a big heartfelt thanks to Mr. Bugby, Ms. Kaber, Dr. Scon, Ms. Decatrelle, and also Mr. Stewart. So, we're very proud to have you as leaders in our school district, and happy Principals Month. So, we've heard a lot tonight about fentanyl, and we've heard just one individual story of just so many. And I did give the comment that, you know, very proud of our progression. I was really glad that Julie was able to not only confirm that, be part of our solution here, BHUSD. You know, part of that solution is also, you know, finding something to help if there is a case, if there is an overdose. Whether it's, she gave the idea about having this in your home, if a neighbor's looking, or anyone's looking, or perhaps in your car, just having it available. You know, we're very fortunate. Because of the heightened increase in fentanyl deaths and overdoses, that Narcan has become extremely hard to find. As I've mentioned before, it's been around for a long time, but people are now looking at, you know, how Narcan saves lives, and how quickly it can save a life. But you have to have the actual product, and you have to have people that are trained. School districts cannot get Narcan fast enough. None of the school districts around us are able to get it. People are putting in orders in the state. People are trying to go through the county. People are using every resource that they have. You've heard me talk a lot about the strength of community partnerships. And our team reached out to Gina and Jeff from Mickey Fine Pharmacy, because we've partnered with them so closely on so many things. They were able to put us in for a connection to be able to have the product, and then also have it delivered in a timely manner. And I'm proud to say, we have it. It's, we have it in our high school already. Administrators will be trained tomorrow on how to use Narcan. Certainly, our school district nurse, Daniel, he can also train people. So, that will happen tomorrow. So, just as quickly as tomorrow, we're going to have over 22 people that are trained in our school district. And then, that's when we will do the outreach for volunteers in our school, staff members to also get trained. You can't get too many people trained. And so, when we have the access. We're already putting into a process that to have, you know, if we have to unfortunately ever have to use it, or there's an expiration date, we're all putting in processes right now so that, you know, that if we reach that expiration date, that we already have secured new products to continue as we move into the future. So, we're very proud of that. As was mentioned, we have a lot of things happening in our school district, but also in LA County. And so, this is an opportunity where there is a virtual town hall on fentanyl. Dr. Ferrer will moderate that town hall via Zoom on October 12th, 2022, at 6:00 PM. I again think that as many people as possible to start viewing, participating in these types of conversations is really important to do at this time. This is just one of many things that are happening in even our own school district, with our parent university in partnership with the BVMS PTA, and also our BHPD. We are bringing experts in. So, not only is this happening in our classrooms, but also that as a community and as a school community. So, you're going to see a lot of opportunities in the next several weeks to months. It's something that we need to continue talking about. That awareness with our students and the children of the parents in our community deserve to have as many opportunities as possible to get an understanding of all of the possibilities of what could happen. You know, one of the, the blessing and curse of working with children is oftentimes that they act before they think. And so, that's our job is to reverse that and to start providing skills so that in any situation, a student has been educated enough to think about what they're doing before they do it. Because this is one of those instances where it's so quick that it could be too late. And so, we can't talk enough about this for the safety of our kids. So, one of the things that we've talked about over the last couple of months is this change in the structure that we have with our construction services in our school district. And we're going to be providing a lot more opportunities so that you can find out more about what's happening in our school district. This is just a maintenance item. There's always discussion about Conheime and what's happening, and people reporting that they're not happy with the facilities at Conheime. So, we're actually going to be looking at the maintenance update for Conheime for as long as we're going to have it. We're going to be prioritizing areas that are open to the public and to our kids and staff every day. And we're going to prioritize the type of maintenance that we can do on our end to ensure that it's safe, that it looks good. And we're going to have an opportunity soon to share that information with you so that we can just share the things that we're going to do to make it look a lot nicer before our construction program moves on and we don't need the Conheime anymore. So, in the same train of thought, you know, we are going to be having on the 25th of October, an opportunity to have a study session. We'll be in here at 3:30. And it's going to be an opportunity, it's before our regular scheduled meeting, because we really do want to show you, and the action that we have is that we want to have discussions that are public, that people can be part of and listen to real time about the timelines that we have in our school district, the challenges that we have with the construction that we have, how that meets the budget. And you'll have an opportunity to meet our entire team that we're really proud of in this study session. If you haven't ever attended a study session, it's different from a formal presentation like we're giving now. You know, we're going to have an opportunity to have a lot more free discussion about what's happening. It's not necessarily a finished presentation. So, we look forward to that. It's dialogue, it's conversation, and we're really happy to bring this experience, which is a lot different than the way this has been in the past. We already had the opportunity earlier today to honor Ms. Stradford, so I just wanted to also place that in my report. And again, just if you could have seen the pride on Michelle Stradford's parents' face, their picture's right in the middle. What an incredible opportunity to see the success of their daughter. And we're just so fortunate to be able to have her here. Many of us in this room attended a walk-run, it was 5K for Not Today Cancer. Many of you also were watching, and they were here when JJ was sharing her story about Mason, which is, again, just another story that people are willing to share publicly, which is, you know, really the best message we can get. This was so highly attended. I had the honor to walk with Mrs. Marcus at this event. And we were just proud to see so many families and just so many community members that aren't even part of BHUSD, but they're part of Beverly Hills. And people really showed up. So, it was a great event for everyone. There's a lot of PTA meetings, as you know, at your school sites, especially if you're a parent with more than one child at more than one school. But we do have collectively, there is a PTA council meeting. And this is just such a great opportunity, if you ever have the time to stop by. We're back in person. It's at the district office in our small boardroom, which is a really nice, intimate, cozy place to have a conversation. And it's this great opportunity to be able to see people from the city, oftentimes the city council. As you can see here, we have people from all over the school community and all different organizations and partnerships in our community. And it's just such a great opportunity to be able to have that in one room and have access to really people with the most important positions in our entire city. And they come and they visit us, and our parents do a great job of running the event. Just a couple more things quickly. This was a great night. If you had a chance to see Mayor Bossy at the annual evening of the mayor, and she gives kind of a state-of-the-city address. And I was really impressed with Mayor Bossy, who had a lot of really nice things to say about how important this school is. And she had a conveying message that was true to her heart, and that is all about fire, police department, and our schools. So, we want to thank her for singling us out and providing us with some praise that felt great to hear in front of our entire city. And finally, just another great event for, through our PTA. This was at BVMS, and this was a 1920s event. And it was just amazing. It was in a restaurant, but a private room in West Hollywood. And it was just so great. Like, I thought, are really parents going to be getting into 1920s gear? And are they really going to do this? But you could see from the picture, they did. And people had a great time. There was a great auction as well. I'm not sure what I went for, but I did offer a day with a student, so they will be superintendent for the day. Not sure what that went for, but, you know, hopefully I'll be able to introduce that student to you soon. And finally, just a thank you. You know, Mr. Bugby talked about getting emotional, and, you know, I'm going to try not to do that. You know, having a student that is not well in our district has been really hard on everybody in our school community. And so, Ms. Starkins and I did just an outreach. We were able to meet with the family at the hospital and talk with them, extend our well wishes. This is a student that is known by a lot of people who's very involved. And we had this opportunity to talk with the parents. And the parents spent about 25 minutes with Ms. Starkins and I and said, you know, this is what we would really appreciate. This is what would help us. And we're just so grateful that they would have that conversation with us and actually share what they need. So, we put out that communication, which is what their need was. You know, it's a very rare illness that 1,400 people a year get diagnosed with. In fact, the one doctor that they were working with has had four cases. And so, their ask was huge to them. But when we put this out to our community, Ms. Starkins and I were not prepared for what our Saturday morning into Sunday would look like with the outpouring. I've never seen it before in any community. And the number of people And the number of people that wanted to help, that actually had contacts to get this specialist and get this specialist to connect and actually talk with the family. And it was hundreds of people reaching out. And we got back to every single person. And we were just so grateful, overwhelmed by the support. And for those people that didn't have a contact in our community with on a professional level with this doctor, those people were also donating into a gift card. And, you know, Rose Kaiserman, Amy Wilken, Melissa Stein, thank you so much for immediately after we sent that out, we received a telephone call from the PTSA. And they said, how can we help? Do you think that this would be helpful? And there are thousands of dollars that were immediately donated so that this family who's living and staying at the hospital is getting food and all the essentials that they need. So, you know, I often say I've been doing this for a long time, but I've never ever seen the outpouring like I have this weekend. And got to tell you that that feels really good to be part of a community that is that willing to give and to share information to help another family that they don't even know. And that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bregge. Mrs. Marcus?
I feel lucky right now. I always get to go first on these. And I know that won't last very long. So I'm going to take advantage of it. But I have to tell you again, Dr. Bregge, thank you for that very comprehensive report. It really included a lot of what's going on in our community. It was really full, packed full. Just a couple of comments on a couple of the things that I would like to make note on the virtual town hall. I hope that we will put that out to the whole community over and over and over to get people to watch it. Because I think that's one of the things that we need to do. And I hope that that's on the horizon. I wasn't sure, but I wanted to mention that.
And Mrs. Marcus, can I just add to the so you're right. I mean, in the communication, we were very quick to put out communication. We put out a couple of communications. And there's another one that if you haven't received it yet, you'll be receiving it shortly on what we're doing as a district to to share this information.
Thank you so much. On October 19th, I love the idea that that event is from 8:30 AM to 9:15. But I'm a little bit concerned about that because I would love to and I think that's a Wednesday, if I remember. Is that a Wednesday? I'm not sure. If that's a Wednesday, it may be a late start day for the kids. I don't know if there's a late if there is a late start day on Wednesday, as I recall. But I also would like to see if there's any way that that can be taped and shown in the evening. Again, because I think the information on it would be so good that if there's any way of putting that out there. I don't know if you're planning on doing that. You're smiling. I don't know if that's what that means.
The PTA, I don't want to overstep the PTA because the PTA is presenting the whole thing.
Yeah.
I'm sure we can have a conversation with them.
Absolutely.
I appreciate that because I think that's something that should be repeated. I'm glad to see that the Conheim building is getting some maintenance. I've often heard that the kids, when other teams come and they look at our facility and they think, this is Beverly Hills, and it looks really pretty bad. And so the fact that we're giving it a facelift and making it a little bit more presentable, I really compliment the maintenance department getting on it and doing some work on it. And I think it's going to make a difference. I just want to say that I want to thank the city for their support on the Mason Run because, as you recall, in the past, it was held within the park itself. And this year, it had to get out of the park because there was such a tremendous demand. And the city supported the police department in letting us run the city streets for the 5K rather than the inside the park. And I will definitely try to be there on October 25th at that event that they mentioned. I'll look for more information on it. But once again, I want to thank you, Dr. Bregge, for this really vast amount of information that you just gave us. So thank you.
In an effort to keep this moving, I'm just going to say thank you very much for the comprehensive report.
Rochelle, you stole everything I was going to say. Every last.
I know you're right. But I will add this. I think that, as you all recall, we did put together a community pledge. And I think a lot of people said, well, how do we actually put this into practice? And I think that the outpouring of support for this family and the child who's been saddled with a horrific condition and illness, and how everyone rallied together is perhaps a great reflection of the community pledge. And I really, it makes me very happy to be a part of this district.
Thank you.
To your last slide, I say you're welcome and no.
I'd like to just say thank you for also reporting on Conheim. I'm I really am thankful to Ken Haas and Raphael for moving on that and and putting they're in the process now of putting together plans for how we will refurbish to, you know, for the temporary time period for Conheim, both inside and out. And I'm looking forward to seeing that when it comes to the board and its completion and and the timeline that goes with that. So thank you very much for doing that. I know the community has all spoken about it, and so have we. And I appreciate you responding. And and I look forward to it. And I also encourage everybody to come to the study session for the construction update because we really want to and to tell other people about it because we really want to get the message out to the community so that they can come. And everybody has always has questions about construction. And I think it's really important that everybody hear it when the board hears it as well, so that the information is heard firsthand. And it will also be recorded so that people can also, if they're not able to attend at 3:30, they'll be able to watch it on KBEV. Yes?
Just a quick update for Mrs. Marcus and anybody watching. The PTA from BVMS is super quick and has just informed me that they will definitely be recording the 19th. It is a late start Wednesday. And so people can watch it back later. And if you want to join it live on the Zoom, you can request the Zoom link from the BVMS PTA just by sending them an email, bvmspta@bhusd.org.
Thank you, Rebecca. Now we have a board reports and board meeting reports. And I will start with Mrs. Marcus as we continue to disseminate a lot of information.
Oh, I attended the Health and Safety Commission meeting on October 3. And I would just like to say that the police department and the fire department were there. The fire department is training. They're going to an interesting thing, houses that are being torn down, they're starting to use those houses to have training sessions for fire drills and things like that. I found that very. So if a house is being torn down, there's no use to save it. So why not use it for training purposes? And that's what they're going to do. They have a there's a mutual aid plan that the helping other fire departments where they they were talking about the fact that if there's a fire in LA or if it's in Culver City, and there's a common usage of they help each other out. They are really very, very good at that. And they do it by regions. And LA and Beverly Hills are in they're in Area A of Region One, so that that they can go out to. For example, I brought up the question about there's families that live up in Franklin Canyon, and they are part of the LA, actually. But the Beverly Hills Fire Department is just a short distance away. And I asked them about the fact, do they respond to something that might be in there? And they said, yes, because we can get there much faster than the LA Department, which is off on Sunset and Beverly Glen. So they frequently will do that. So they were talking about that. They did talk a little bit about tricks and treats on Halloween and the candy and so on, and using it and being very careful about it. And they were that was a big concern because they feel that there could be a problem with some people dispensing candy that could be a problem. And also that crime, that there's never any downtime in crime. They're still getting caught. And one of the things they now do is they can use the license plates, just as we can do here in the school district to identify cars and so on. The Beverly Hills Police Department was talking about fireproof blankets, which I found to be very interesting that they they employ those. And there was one comment from a member that I'm going to save for my board comments at the end that's related to something that I'm very concerned about. So that was the only meeting that I actually attended during the last two weeks.
So I have kind of a disappointing report. I'm the board liaison to the BHEF, and I haven't been able to get invited to a meeting. So I I've asked to attend the meetings. The first meeting, I was told, you know, but logistically, they want to discuss having a board liaison. And since then, I've been told mixed things on whether or not it's appropriate because it's a separate 501(c)(3), whether it's necessary because Dr. Bregge attends meetings occasionally. I'm I'm confused. I'm going to be honest. I'm confused. The mission of the BHEF is to raise money and awareness for BHUSD. It says on the website, we're working to connect the community, including community leaders, civic leaders, of which we are. So I would like to do more for BHEF. I would like a closer working relationship with BHEF. We haven't been able to get that yet. So I will continue working on that. I've also requested the bylaws to understand whether we what kind of relationship we can have because that was called into question. And I haven't received the bylaws yet. So if anyone can help me with any of this, I would be very grateful. Thanks.
I think because of the high holidays, there have been no further meetings of the HRC. So I have nothing to report.
Dr. Bregge and I and President Wells attended the LAXA meeting last Monday. President Wells has joined the executive board of LAXA. Congrats on that. The main discussion of the night was recruitment and retention of teachers. They made a couple of short announcements that the LACO has hired a chief of wellbeing to address the mental wellbeing issues plaguing the world, really. They have a resource called EASE, which is Employee Assistance Service for Education. They discussed that. Here's a little flyer of it. It's for help with people who work in the county for any of the school districts. It's a free resource. Yes, sure you may. Thank you. I want that back. Thank you. So with the teacher shortage, they had their first countywide job fair, had over 400 participants virtually. They also discussed, they put us in breakout groups and discussed retention and recruitment. Our breakout group, as most did, really said that a lot of recruitment is based around pay and benefits. And lastly, environment. That was a big sticking issue in this day and age where a lot of work has become virtual and people are working out of their homes and private industries are paying more than than public education institutions. It's no wonder why it's been a little harder to recruit teachers. Retention of teachers is a little different. A lot of districts are changing the way they do professional development. They're tailoring it to their staffs. And we thought, at least Michael and I were sitting there, we thought, oh, you know, we're going to be kind of ahead of the curve on this. I guess we call it voice and choice for our teachers. But most districts are moving in that direction, is what it seems like. This is not, you know, no matter what kind of district it is, whether it's in a more affluent area or a district in a struggling area, they're all kind of moving their professional development in that direction of voice and choice to help the retention. They say the first three years are critical in keeping teachers. But for recruitment, though, the biggest problem that everybody discussed was with classified staff, not necessarily with certificated staff. So and those problems also are similar across the board in the county as well. So we got a pretty good dose sitting there. They're not they don't have in-person meetings every month anymore. And it was nice to sit there in person with other trustees from other districts, districts that we may not even ever heard of, but that we're all kind of in the same boat together. We like to think that we're a little bit above the fray here. We're not. So it's just how we the resources that we have to handle these particular challenges are fortunately a little different in our district than most districts. So that is it. And I guess there's another LAXA meeting in November.
Thank you, Noah. I I also attended the Evening with the Mayor, and I just was really delighted to hear her highlight the school district and to also call out the community pledge. And I think it was really wonderful for her to acknowledge our school district. I think it says a lot because it speaks volumes about the direction that we're moving in and having a greater presence within the city. So that that felt great to hear. As well, I went to the PTA council meeting, which Dr. Bregge has already mentioned that. And I would always recommend everybody to come because we did hear from we heard from construction, we heard from our police, and we heard from the city with parking and traffic. And I think there's always a lot of great information to hear and from regarding our security. So I encourage everybody to go to those meetings. I think that thing that I'd like to highlight from that meeting is they did a presentation on the program, the arts program. And it's a national PTA program. And it's called Show Your Voice. That's the theme for this year. It's the
Reflections?
I don't know if it's called. Is it called Reflections? It's the PTA National Arts Program. And yeah, it's Reflections, sorry. And the deadline is this Friday, October 14th at 4:00 PM. And for any parents listening, please ask your children about it and encourage them. It's for dance, choreography, film production, literature and writing, music composition, photography, and the visual arts. And the winners of this, they continue on and they get national recognition. And it's a really fantastic program. She really they presented it to us. And I think that this is another one of those items where the more awareness that we can build and have our many talented students participate, I'm sure that they will be recognized for their efforts and will encourage them to continue on with their passions and will also help them when they're moving on to the next level of their education. So again, that is on Friday, October the 14th. And that is the deadline. And you can get more information at that at reflections@bvmspta.com. The other item is I attended the LAXA meeting. And LAXA, for those of you who don't know, it's the LA County School Trustees Association. It's an organization that school board member for school board members. And it was created in 1937 as by the LA County Superintendent of Schools. About 90 of the 93 90% of the 93 school and community college districts participate. And I I was appointed as the Secretary Treasurer to the Executive Board and really excited about that to take a more leadership role with LAXA and to bring that to our district. And at the same time, they they appointed a ad hoc committee for legislative advocacy. And I think that's another thing that will be really interesting for us as a school board to be participating in on behalf of our school district. So I'm really looking forward to that. And also, we're talking about hosting one of these monthly meetings at some time in the near future, which will be great to have all the trustees come here. And it's a great way to share information with the with all of the different school districts in LA County. The other thing is we had Dr. Bregge and I had a meeting with Rebecca as well. We met with the Sustainability Committee with the city. They reached out to us as they are looking at trying to bring the school into get more involved in their efforts. And we met with Wendy Nystrom, who's a part of the Public Works Department and is also on the Sustainability Committee, and Erica Felcenthal, who's on Health and Safety Committee, who's on this Sustainability Committee. And they made a great recommendation for us as a starting point to do a survey of our school community to see what issues around sustainability are important to them. And that will be forthcoming from the district. And the last thing I attended was the CTE Advisory Committee. And Cindy Dubin really presented to us again, all of the opportunities that she's working on to present to the students in terms of utilizing all of our many connections within the city, with our businesses and the city, to participate in really three different events. One is career tours where students can go to places of business that they're interested in and meet with the people in those businesses where they can give them a tour of their business and talk about what that is. Another is for people to come and speak to the students for career days to talk about what they do in their career. And the third is to create internships. And we highlighted, we spoke about all of those different areas. And the first thing And the first thing that's coming up, and I, actually, students can sign up for it now, and that is the, uh, career tours. And those are happening October twelfth, nineteenth and twenty-sixth. And you can contact Cindy Dubin at the Career, um, Center to talk about, to sign up for that. And I think there's, there's some really great opportunities for students to, to go to these places of business. And that is all I have for meetings.
Can I ask a question about that? I was on that, uh, CTE Committee and I did not have any notification of it. Is there two members of the board already on that committee? Or is there still somebody else that can be on that committee? Because I used to be on it and I never got any notification of it.
Um, well, I, I know right now Noah and I, we're at that meeting and I think that, you know, come December, we can reorganize and, and we can, we can switch places, uh, on the CTE.
I, I think in the past, it was, um, President, Vice President were part of that committee. And so, um, I think that's, that's why she had the invites the way that she did. But.
But I think it's, I, I think it's great to, to rotate, uh, for those committees because there's a lot of information that's shared. Okay, terrific. Um, next item on our agenda. Business and Finance.
I will make a motion for the approval of Resolution twenty-two, twenty-three, zero, zero, six. Reconfirming Declaration of Surplus Property.
Do you have a second?
A second.
Motion was made by Mr. Margot and seconded by Mr. Halimi. Um, Mr. Guzman?
Yes, and, uh, good evening again to our, our board, uh, community and, uh, Cabinet Dr. Breggy as well. So, in regards to this resolution, it's just reconfirming the Declaration of Surplus Property. Uh, as you know, on January fourteenth, the SBE granted the district waiver that authorized the district to use the RF, to use the RFP process to pursue a potential, uh, lease of the property. Um, and so that waiver expires on January fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three. Uh, this resolution will allow us to file for, uh, an extension of that waiver.
Does anybody have any questions? Okay, I will call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes five-zero. That may have a motion for the next item?
Make a motion for the rejection of Claim number six-one-two-three-zero-two?
Second.
Motion was made by Mr. Margot and seconded by Mr. Halimi.
Uh, yes, and so this one is just, uh, for the approval of rejection of Claim number six-one-two-three-zero-two. Um, by doing this, notices will be sent to the appropriate parties informing them that their claim has been presented to the Board of Education and has been rejected by operation of law.
Any questions? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five-zero. Um, the next item?
I'll make a motion for the approval of agreement for Reprographic and Document Management Services for Bond Program Measures E and BH, that RFP number FAC-two-oh-two-two-dash-twenty-three-dash-zero-one.
I'll second the motion.
The motion was made by Mr. Halimi and seconded by Mrs. Marcus. Mr. Guzman?
Yes, uh, so this agreement is for, uh, the Reprographic and Document Management Services for the bond. Uh, so essentially, uh, what we wanted to do was to make sure that there was a clear, transparent process. So, there was, uh, RFP that was conducted by Fonder Solari regarding the Reprographic and Document Management Services to secure pricing for these services for the term of three years. We received two proposals, one from ARC and Copyland by the RFP deadline. After reviewing the proposals, ARC was found to have the most comprehensive pricing and document management options. And so that's what we're asking for approval today.
Any questions?
I'd just like to make a comment that for two years, almost two full years, we've been operating without a contract on that service, uh, up till just now, starting with the new contract.
Uh, yes, so that's, uh, and, and we're looking at really all over, uh, the district, making sure that we're, making sure that everything's, that's in a contract has been brought to the board. So, we're, we're doing that due diligence.
Um, Rafael, are there, um, savings? Because I had asked this question and I got directed toward a price sheet and the quotes, but I don't, didn't know how compared to the previous, um, to, was it a crisp, right?
So, yes.
C-two, yeah, C-two. Um, so are, are there, are there gonna be overall savings? Is our prices pretty constant on this?
So, we have a not to exceed of twenty-five thousand. Um, I don't know if something happened. We, we have a not to exceed of twenty-five thousand. And essentially, um, basically the, when I was looking at the cost sheets, they, they don't look too different. It's just hard to really quantify right now because we're not really sure how much of the services we're going to be using. So, um, once we start understanding a little more of what we're gonna be needing, uh, this year, we'll be able to quantify that. But it is a not to exceed. So, the twenty-five thousand is not something that we could necessarily compare because we, we just wanted to make sure we had, uh, you know, enough to get us through. And hopefully, what will happen is, in, you know, in the future, we'll be able to get, uh, a, a more accurate year-to-year amount.
And that, and that not to exceed though is a three-year?
Yes.
Thanks, okay.
And if, if for any reason we get close to that amount, the twenty-five thousand, we'll make sure to bring it back to the board.
I like what you did there.
Thank you, Rafael. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five-zero. Thank you, Rafael.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two, twenty-three, zero-seven. Continuing authority to hold virtual meetings pursuant to AB-three-six-one.
Second.
Any, any comments or questions? Okay. The motion was made by Mr. Margot and seconded by Mr. Halimi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five-zero. The next item, may I have a motion?
I will make an emotion to approve the new members to the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, Raymond Zalakian and Vlad France.
I'll second.
Any comments?
Only comment is that Ray is someone I've known for many years. We went to high school together and I'm just thrilled to see, uh, him involved. Um, he's got beautiful girls in the school district and, uh, just stoked to see him joining the CBOC.
Yeah, I think we have a couple of very highly qualified applicants.
Right, that's great to, great to hear.
CBOC is in good hands.
We, we're definitely adding, um, some very qualified people to CBOC, so.
Absolutely.
It's really wonderful to see. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five-zero. The next item on our agenda is approval to disband the Facilities and Construction Committee.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Okay, this item, um, we discussed this in our last study session to, uh, before, at a previous board meeting. And really, the reason that this, uh, committee was put into place was when we had the structure with Don Blake and TCDS, where they reported directly to the board. And, um, Mrs. Marcus actually put this committee into place because we were having issue getting reporting, uh, from TCDS to the board. And now that we've restructured our construction program and realigned it so that the reporting, uh, the reporting structure has changed to go through, uh, through the district. And we've put into place Will Carrot, our new Assistant Superintendent of Construction Services. Um, we really appreciate, did I say that wrong? Executive Director, thank you very much, um, of construction. Uh, our, now that we have this in place, uh, the, the, the committee has served its purpose, uh, which doesn't mean that we won't be having committee, other committees in the future, but this was a specific committee to address that need. And, uh, we really appreciate, uh, all of the service of our committee members who have served over the past year and a half on this committee. And, um, as a board, we discussed this last, in the study session, but we need to approve it as a board on the agenda. Any comments?
Yes, I have a comment. I'd like, uh, though Mary just mentioned it, uh, over a year ago, I formed this committee to provide oversight and transparency in the construction program. I'm not yet comfortable that eliminating this committee is going to do what it's supposed to do or the new project or the way it's going to go. And so for that in mind, I am not in favor of rushing to disband this at this time, and I will vote no.
So, um, oh, may I go next?
Yes, go ahead.
So, um, I, I've, I've given this some thought. I, I believe like many of the, um, like a lot of the structure and the strategy with our construction program, there are a lot of things that are evolving. And I believe that this is one area, um, having this committee is another area where perhaps it has served its purpose and should be sunset. On the other side, um, I, I do believe in having subcommittees. I believe in having, you know, uh, that advisors and knowledgeable people from our community, uh, involved and, you know, have, have that, um, kind of built in. So, um, I'd love to hear from the rest of my board members, but I'm in, I'm inclined to make a friendly amendment to this. What I would ask is, I'm very comfortable disbanding this committee because I believe it served its purpose. But what I would like to see is for, um, the, uh, administration to come back and, uh, advise or propose what a new committee might look like that might help, um, the, uh, construction and, uh, the facilities teams. Uh, because it may not look and may have the same, um, uh, the mandate, uh, as, you know, what we've currently seen here. But our systems are evolving, so I would like to give the opportunity to, uh, our new Executive Director, to Rafael, to Fonder Solari, to come back and tell us, uh, maybe what a new committee might look like. So, I would, I would be in favor of voting to disband this committee, but I would ask the, I would like to see the administration come back and advise us on what a new committee might look like.
So, Mr. Halimi, just a point of information. What we can do then, instead of making a friendly amendment, is we can vote for this and then give direction. Because we, we can give direction as a board, we can't vote as a board. So, that would, um, keep it separate.
As long as we're all on the same page with giving that direction, yes, uh, then I'd be comfortable.
I think that's a great idea. Dr. Stern?
Um, I tend to agree with what Gabe is saying. I mean, I think disbanding makes sense. I think that we have a whole new structure now and the, the genesis of the original, um, committee, uh, is, the purpose has, has done what it needed to do, but now we have a new structure. Um, and in the interest of being efficient and not redundant, I think it makes sense. But I can also respect, uh, what Gabe is saying, that perhaps, uh, there might be, uh, space for another type of committee that serves a correct purpose. But at this time, I think that is, that might be premature to make such a, a committee.
Yeah, I will concur. Um, I think committees always should have a purpose. And, and like I've discussed before, our Finance Committee has served many purposes over the years. Um, guided the board, advised us, given us terrific suggestions. That has helped us save millions of dollars. So, um, if, if with the new team in place, if it, and, and Gabe's suggestion, if they come to a, um, kind of a consensus on what a purpose of a new committee might serve, I think that would be a good idea to move that direction.
Just to clarify the direction though, I would like to have something brought back, whether it's in a superintendent's report or whatever, in the next couple of board meetings with just some, some, you know, opinion from, but administration on this, uh, topic. And, and with that, I'm, I'm good with.
So let's, so I suggest we get this to a vote and then make the direction clear so we can all agree on the direction.
Sure.
Okay.
I'd like to make one more comment, and that is that, uh, we, and that is just my own personal opinion. We don't know for sure how this whole, uh, organization is really gonna work. So, I, for that reason, it's the reason that I am going to vote no, because I want to find out how it's working. So, that's the one of the, I feel it's premature. That's my comment.
Thank you, Michelle. Um, with that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? No. The motion passes four to one with, uh, Mrs. Marcus voting no.
So, do you want to give your direction now?
Yes.
Sure, so I'd like to ask, um, the administration to please, within the next, call it two or three board meetings, please come back and advise the board on what a future committee to support, uh, construction facilities, uh, might look like. And if the direction is that you believe that we don't need a committee, like, please just come back and tell us that. But I would like to have a future, uh, discussion on that topic.
Okay, thank you.
I'll support that.
Great.
So will I. Dr. Stern and Mrs. Marcus, agree?
Yes.
Okay. Mrs. Marcus, you agree?
Well, I,
I guess that's no, so.
I have redundant, I've been overvoted on the other and I will agree that we do need a committee, and so I will go along with that portion of it. I mean, I'm, I'm willing to bend that far.
Okay, terrific. I mean, the, the goal is transparency and, um, and also efficiency in how we communicate the information.
Yes.
And I think we can all agree with that. Uh, okay, so the next item on our agenda is, oh, public comment. And we have two public comments this evening. Uh, the first is Mahal Amir Salkin. Okay, um, Turata Elektra Palidu? Did I say that correctly? Okay, terrific. Well, welcome.
Thank you. Dear members of the board, um, I came, I'm talking to you to request your help and understanding. Yes.
Before you start, Turata, I just want, I, I, I forgot to say one thing, and that is that you have three minutes. So, just to be mindful of your time.
Okay, sounds good.
So, I, I just don't want to cut you off when we get there. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
On Saturday eighth, we received an email from Mr. Breggy informing us that the school attempted to remove my daughter Annabelle from ILC virtual class. She's a fifth grader and she's the girl in the black. This came as a result of, um, disagreements, frustration in the way Ms. Kwon has been handling her, her assignments, the teacher. And maybe because last year it was bad blood too. It was not, uh, there was a lot of frustration and arguments. It is critical that Annabelle remain in her virtual studies. She had an excellent teacher called Leslie Clark from Air Tutors from Arkansas, who had been trying to help Annabelle catch up and do her work, coursework. Ms. Kwon was approached and asked if she would be kind enough to assist in helping Annabelle access her coursework. It is extraordinary to note that this request was refused not only to Annabelle, but also to their tutor, Leslie Clark, as well. So, as Leslie Clark pointed out, no wonder Annabelle is behind. I, she said, "I'm surprised and saddened to see the excessive level of difficulty placed on the child and myself to accomplish this minor task." So, uh, because she said, "It's a teacher's responsibility to ensure students receive full tuition." It would appear that the staff and horacemen take a different view to their responsibilities. I talked to their tutor on the phone. She told me she had to quit because it was a complaint from the Beverly Hills School District. Basically, she was fired and is very sad because she was a good teacher, a lady from Arkansas. This does not seem to be an insuperable problem. Annabelle is not a problem child from a problem background. Or maybe she is some divorce with her father. She is a young ten-year-old with all the hopes and aspirations that any young child might have. To have the simplest of faith with health and to consign her to a suspended education and bring them down her grades from eighty-two to fifty-nine without providing any explanations is completely mystified. I will, I implore you to review the situation and find in Annabelle's favor. This is not good for her psychologically and nor is, uh, is it benefiting her, her education. It's important for her to remain in virtual study because my ex-husband, her father, is an ex-veteran British soldier from, um, Special British Services, and he has medical problems and he has to reside there. So, it's important for Annabelle to have flexibility to visit, as her brother does too, because he, he is in a virtual class in the middle school. So, just on time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, um, next we'll hear from Mahal Amir Salkin. Mihal.
Good evening, members of, whoop. Good evening, members of the board. I went to this afternoon's board study session to learn more about the change from school site councils to principal advisory committees. I found it disconcerting that you yourselves, the members of the school board, did not know why the SSEs had been disbanded. Yet, when Ms. Wells asked if the parents understood the reason for the switch, the response was, "It's accessible." Whether or not it has gotten out to the masses, it was on the Ed Services website, just out of transparency, so you can see it there. Later, the discussion turned to using the PACs and the strategic plan. Recognizing that the plan was developed without meaningful parent involvement, Ms. Wells asked, "How do we get people to read the strategic plan?" And it struck me, as a surgeon, that this was just like when a hospital staffer hands a patient a long list of risks for her upcoming surgery and then walks away, self-satisfied that he's a long list of risks for her upcoming surgery and then walks away, self-satisfied that he's completed his task. But he's not done a thing to prepare the patient. I impress upon my students that it is our job as the doctors to explain to our patients about risks and benefits and make sure that they understand so they can make an informed decision. Similarly, BHUSD should not be putting the burden on parents to search out information. It is your responsibility as members of the board and as district administrators to make sure that we understand what the issues are, what you're doing, why you are doing it, the benefits to our children and the risks to our children. The physical and psychological separation of the past few years were severely damaging, shredding the one strong fabric of our BHUSD community. One of the strategic plan's pillars is parent engagement. Our children are still our children when they're at school. We should have a seat at the table, at the discussion table, with more than just a rubber stamp. So please, speak with us, listen to us, and work with us to create BHUSD's future. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is communication from board members. Mrs. Marcus?
Well, um, I would like to go back to the Health and Safety Commission meeting. I would like to go back to the Health and Safety Commission meeting because there is an item on the election on November eighth uh, called, uh, it's number nine, thirty-one. And for your benefit, I'd just like to make sure that you understand that this, to vote yes, is to, uh, to keep the ban uh, on tobacco-favored products in the, um, community and in the state, in the consent, uh, county and in the state. So I urge everybody to please vote yes to keep the ban, and that's something that I think is of vital importance. And, uh, that was spoken to us, uh, at that meeting, and I wanted to share that with you. Um, I'm not being political, I hope, in doing that. And the last thing I'd like to make a mention of is that last week, I happened to go over to Horace Mann to help set up the multicultural week that's coming, I believe, this Sunday. And I encourage everybody to get out. I am amazed at the room. We talk about diversity. Well, let me tell you, I've never seen so many countries that are represented by people who go to that school and the artifacts and things that they brought in to share. And they, and it, the, the feeling in that room was unbelievable, and to see that room today is amazing. So, and then the program starts, I believe, at two o'clock in the afternoon. Is that correct, Mr. Bregg Bugby?
Give or take.
Give or take, oh, okay.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and it probably two oh two, about five o'clock or maybe more. Food galore from all the countries, entertainment of all kinds, people dressed up. And it really brings together that community and the diversity of it. I was really, and I'm going to be there, and I hope everybody else will join me because I think it's going to be an afternoon well spent. Oh, one more thing. Hagsamayak, everybody, on the second day of Sukkot.
Hagsamayak. I want to start by thanking, uh, President Wells for getting involved on Laxa. And I know that, that Dr. Breggy, um, for, for taking a leadership role on the executive committee. And, uh, for Dr. Breggy, um, getting more involved in the superintendent's council, I think, was. I, I really just believe that our engagement as a school district, we, we don't sit on an island, as we know. We dealt with a lot of issues with masking and a whole bunch of other things that we were not very fond of. Um, so having engagement in these organizations and having our voice as a school district representative in these organizations, we know is really important. And it's an additional kind of volunteer task on top of all the work that you guys are already doing. But, um, I just wanted to say thank you because I, I do think it's really important. Um, I want to provide further context for my comments that I made in the meeting reports section about BHF. I think everyone on this board at a minimum knows, and many people in this community know, how important I think BHF is, how absolutely vital it is. The work that BHF is doing is absolutely worthy of everybody's support in not only the, you know, school district, not only from parents, but the entire community. We are blessed to have an incredible community with so many supportive people. I mean, I will say it again, you know, when Mayor Bossy was at our event, you know, she said we can have anything we want in terms of support from this city. I mean, that's the kind of, you know, city that we have. Um, but in order to get to educational excellence, it requires every part of the community to work together to get there. And so, um, I see an opportunity to do better than we're doing today. And, uh, you know, I'm not going to stop until we get there. Uh, you know, we, we, we raise the, the way to raise the bar is to partially look towards other examples around us that are doing a great job of what they're doing. Said it before, Manhattan Unified has a twenty million dollar, you know, endowment. We have a three million dollar endowment. We could be doing a lot better than we're doing today. And so I, you know, implore, um, the, you know, community to give to BHF, but I also expect that BHF is going to open up and accept the help that I think we all want to give. Um, and it's a, it's a two-way street. So, uh, I'm disappointed, but I expect that that's going to open up and I expect that we're going to do a lot more, uh, but together and raise a lot more money for our students and the great programs that we want to do. So thanks.
My comments are that I have no comments.
Thank you, everyone. Uh, the, just want to announce on October twenty-third, since it's before our next meeting, the city, um, Human Relations Commission is doing a Day of Giving. It's the first all-city-wide Day of Giving that they're doing. I know that we are going to have our community pledge there as well. Um, uh, nine to one at the farmer's market Sunday. And they'll be collecting items for three different charities, including PATH, Safe Parking LA, LA County Animal Shelter. Um, they're looking for non-perishable goods, toiletries, jackets, blankets, um, dog toys and used towels. Um, and you can look, just go on, um, the website is beverlyhills.org backslash embrace civility for details. Thank you.
Thank you, Noah. Um, I, I, you bring up a good point, and that is that, um, in partnership with the Human Relations Committee, they, um, they offered to the school district to have a, have the community pledge there at the farmer's market. So I think that's really wonderful and another, um, you know, result of our partnering with the city and the different commissions. Uh, and along those same lines, uh, the next Beverly Hills, um, group is, uh, in charge of putting on the next night, which is on Saturday, October twenty-second. It's going to be a big event. They closed down the street on South Beverly. Uh, the school's going to be participating as well. This will be bigger than National Night Out. And they have live entertainment, they have Lance Bass of N'Sync, O-Town and LFO, and also our own Michael LeBeau will be performing. Um, and all the stores will be open, open, uh, along South Beverly. They'll have different promotions going on. It's a street party and it's for all ages, and I really encourage everybody to go out. It's going, they're putting a lot of, um, effort into this and it's supported by the city in a big way, and it'll be a lot, a lot of fun. The other thing is that Rotary on the same day, earlier in the day, Saturday, October twenty-second, from ten to twelve, will be doing a blanket and toy collection at the fire department. So, uh, if you haven't given your blankets, saving your blankets for civility, um, please bring toys and blankets and especially if you have new toys as well. I, I, I think it's really special for these kids. They don't have, you know, they don't have the, the means and it really means a lot. And any blankets and also, um, soft goods, like if you have sweatshirts or, or, um, you know, like warm blanket, uh, warm sweaters or, uh, sweatshirts, things of that, of that nature. It'd be great. Just come by the fire department. You get to see the fire trucks and the, the firemen and you can drop off your blankets and toys, and it's always appreciated and it's a big event. Um, and that's all I have. Dr. Breggy?
No, nothing further.
Okay. Uh, it's a lot of information sharing tonight. Um, I think that, I, I, I really appreciate our board. I think we're really moving in a great direction. Today, earlier today, we talked about board goals and those will be coming, uh, as well. And, and, uh, a lot of great things on the horizon. So thank you, everybody, for being here. And, uh, with that, I will officially adjourn the meeting. It is seven twenty-one. Thank you so much.